We now move on to the session on administrative justice and legal administration. And some of this please clear the speak and markers for members, members who intend to speak, please press a raise hand button. I first welcome the judicial judiciary administrator, century for justice and your teams. We will first invite the SJ to speak and then the J will be invited to speak century for justice. Chairman members, before I walk you through the draft estimates of the justice, I'd like to take this opportunity to stress that Hong Kong's judicial independence has always been built upon solid infrastructure and judicial practice and constitutionally guaranteed by the basic law. The courts can exercise independent judicial power without any, without being subject to any interference. And courts can enjoy security of Kenya and immunity from legal action while discharging judicial duties. The constitutional bedrock that supports judicial independence would not be shaken. The prosecution work of the DOJ is a matter of such of much interest that the DOJ would uphold justice while paying attention to efficiency, but I'd like to stress that law enforcement agencies will not pass on all in cases to DOJ because some cases might be under investigation or that the cases do not warrant any follow up or that the LEA deem that there's insufficient evidence for passing on the cases to DOJ or that the cases have been dealt with according to internal procedures of the early days. All the cases involving anti extradition law amendments from twenty nineteen for the most serious crimes such as rioting and the law for assembly, they would be dealt with by the special duties subdivision of the prosecution's division. The subdivision received one thousand one hundred and seventy five cases referred by the police and have dealt with ninety eight percent or one thousand one hundred and fifty six cases. Some people criticize the DOJ for lack of efficiency in prosecution. I think such claims are based on wrongful information and have ignored the objective facts in terms of the estimates. The draft estimates for the DOJ in twenty twenty two to twenty three were about two point three four eight three billion dollars owing to COVID nineteen in the previous year, that is twenty twenty one to twenty two. The revised estimates show that the DOJ did not completely spend the original allocation. The total estimates for twenty twenty two to twenty three will go up about nineteen point five percent compared with the revised estimates last year. But it will be three point six point three percent lower than the original estimates from last year. From members' questions, we saw that there is particular concern in two areas, that is promotion of Hong Kong as an international dispute resolution service center and the development of the Greater Bay Area in terms of promoting Hong Kong as an international dispute resolution service center under the support of the central government, the Asian African Legal Consultative Organization, ALCO, held the fifty ninth annual session in Hong Kong in November and announced the setting up of the ALCO Hong Kong Regional Arbitration Center, which shows the support under the National fourteen five year plan in establishing an international legal and dispute resolution service center in Hong Kong. We are conducting the preparation and the center will be open very soon. In order to further enhance our competitive edge in arbitration services, the D H, the DOJ adopted the Law Reform Commission's proposal on outcome related fee structures for arbitration to allow lawyers and clients to enter into flexible fee agreements. We have recently introduced a bill to let go of the Greater Bay Area developments. Legal practitioners who passed the first GBA legal professional examination about to complete the online training provided by the Guangdong Lawyers Association and the second examination will be held in June. In December last year, the third GBA legal department's joint conference endorsed the GBA mediator accreditation standards and GBA mediator code of conduct best practice, which will facilitate the professional development of mediators in the Greater Bay Area. The DOJ continues to promote more comprehensive legal cooperation in civil and commercial matters between the mainland and Hong Kong. The reciprocal recognition of judgments in matrimonial and family cases were subject to local legislation last year and it came into effect in mid February this year. As for the reciprocal recognition of judgments in civil and commercial matters signed in January twenty nineteen, the DOJ consulted the AJ LS panel of Lesko at the end of last month and received general support from members, we will introduce the bill into Lesko shortly. Going forward, the DOJ will continue to promote other areas of work, including the vision twenty thirty for real law ten year plan, which includes real law education, development of law tech, training of local legal professionals. On one hand, we will reinforce real law in our society while promoting the sustainable development of the sector. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I now invite the judicial judiciary administrator to speak. Chairman. I will talk about the job estimates of twenty twenty two to twenty three and highlights of the work of the judiciary. The job estimates for the judiciary in twenty twenty two to twenty three is two point four one five billion dollars, which represents a rise of one hundred and fifty point two million or six point seven percent over the revised estimates for twenty twenty one to twenty two and three point three percent over the original estimates for twenty one to twenty two. The net additional financial resources required are mainly fulfilling existing judicial and non judicial vacancies, additional operating expenses for strengthening corporations, facilitating the application of IT and enhancing administrative support for corporations and other functions of the judiciary. The establishment of judicial post now stands at two hundred and twenty two. Over the years, the judiciary has been launching open recruitment exercises to fill judicial vacancies at appropriate times. Having regard to the judicial manpower situation, operational needs at different, different levels of court for the call of first instance of the high court, three CFI judges were appointed for the district court, one district judge was appointed for the magistrates courts. The latest recruitment exercise for permanent magistrates launched in August twenty twenty one is in progress and we will announce the appointments in due course. The judiciary will continue to monitor the manpower situation and engage deputy judges and judicial officers to meet official needs as far as practical for non judicial manpower in twenty twenty two to twenty three, there will be a net decrease of two civil service posts following a lapse of eight time limited civil service posts upon conclusion of different tasks and an increase of six civil service posts for meeting operational needs. These will provide enhanced support for the use of IT in the judiciary and implement various measures under the enhanced mechanism for handling complaints against judicial conduct. I'd like to talk about the main challenges faced by the judiciary in twenty twenty one. Despite adjustments to court business in light of the public health situation, the overall caseloads at various levels of court were comparable to the levels of twenty nineteen. There was a rise of twenty four percent. The levels were similar or comparable to the levels before the outbreak of COVID. In lights of the chain evolving public health situation, adjustments were made to court capacity and the influx of cases relating to social events and national security law have inevitably affected the average court waiting time for some case types mainly for criminal cases. Now, I'd like to talk about the just face by the judiciary in recent years first. The impacts of the fluctuating public health situation, the obsession of cases dealt with by different levels of court, especially social events, cases and national security law cases. And number three, the increase in the number of leave applications for judicial review relating to non reform attacks. The judiciary has been seeking to handle the maximum volume of court business with existing resources. Since twenty twenty, the judiciary has been striking a balance between public health risks and efficient administration of justice through adjusting court business and adopting social distancing measures from time to time to ensure that courts can continue to carry on business as safely as possible. The latest arrangement was to gradual resumption of court business with reduced capacity following the cessation of the general adjournment of proceedings for around one month to minimize the impacts of these measures on court business, the judiciary has been making greater use of remote hearings and paper disposals to dispose of civil cases where appropriate and continuing to process urgent and priority cases as far as practical. I would talk about the anti extradition law amendment cases and national security law cases since twenty twenty. The there has been an upsurge of such cases which pose challenges to the judiciary. These cases tend to be more complex and involve a large number of defendants, legal representatives, media and public viewers and evidences in the forms of large volume of video recordings requiring long trials for more than twenty to thirty days. The court has endeavored to give priority to these cases to fix early dates for each of these complex SEO NSL cases. But the processing time of each case depends on a range of factors, many of which are beyond the control of the judiciary. Specifically, the parties in each case will invariably need considerable time to complete a series of steps and procedures required to ensure to administrative justice before the case is ready for trial. These include investigation by law enforcement and agencies seeking legal advice, defendants' application for legal aid, seeking case management directions discovery and exchange of evidence and preparation for trial, etc. Operational experience from cases included at district court is that the time expended at the district court before trial a number of them could range from one hundred to three hundred days or even longer, which is around thirty percent more than other criminal cases. Nonetheless, the judiciary has been according high priority to handling these cases as expeditiously as possible while ensuring true administration of justice through a series of proactive and multi problem measures. These include engagement of additional judicial resources, more proactive case management through setting stringent timetable longer court sitting hours and Saturday meetings, making the best use of around one hundred and thirty five existing courtrooms suitable for the criminal cases in eleven law court buildings for handling sixty to seventy hearings of each cases each week, enlarging the capacity of existing courtrooms to handle cases with a large number of defendants through renovation or broadcasting of hearings, recommissioning the Shinwan Law Court Building in October twenty twenty one and planning to construct a mega courtroom for fifty defendants at Punchai Tower, which is expected to complete in twenty twenty three. As of end of February, with the adoption of the above measures, the judiciary has already disposed of some one thousand seven hundred or eighty three percent of some ninety one hundred SE cases brought to various levels of court. The vast majority of cases or ninety seven ninety four percent at the magistrate's courts have been concluded. The imminent challenge in the coming one or two years is to cope with around one hundred and ninety outstanding cases being handled by a district court for NSL cases. A total of eighty five NSL cases, many of them being bail related ones have been received at their different levels of court. Among them, sixty four percent sixty four cases or seventy five percent have been included. Leave application for JR relating to non reforming claims from twenty sixteen to twenty one. The total number of applications to the CFI for leave to apply for jail increase from please be brief as you speak. The vast majority or over ninety percent came from cases relating to non reform claims. The number of other jail cases has remained stable. The percentage of leave granted in these cases remains at a very low level. The judiciary will continue to deploy dedicated manpower and streamline processing procedures as far as possible. Now, I will talk about two key areas of work in the next one or two years. Do we will make greater use of technology to enhance the efficiency of court business? We have a series of initiatives in place in twenty twenty two to twenty three and beyond, including the rollout of an integrated court case management system and the greater use of remote hearings for civil proceedings. We are also working on legislative amendments to give effect to the general application of remote hearings to criminal proceedings. Finally, the family procedure bill. We launched public consultation on the draft bill in February. The bill seeks to legislate for a consolidated set of procedural rules to enhance the efficiency and cost effectiveness of the family justice system based on recommendations in a final report, subject to feedback of the consultation and developments, we will introduce the bill to the legislative council later this year. The judiciary will continue to explore areas of improvement to enhance efficiency of judiciary administration and to provide quality services to court users and the public. Thank you.
A number of members would like to speak, Mr. Hodin, Charlton, Lee Chair, Martin Lau, Doreen Koo and Elizabeth got four minutes each, including answers and questions, Mr. Ambrose Left. I hope that I can be given more time because I have raised several questions. For some of them, I've got some replies, but for some others concerning the judiciary, no reply has been given and the secretaries has advised me to ask them here. I'll be, I have a three questions. All the judiciary. And you are talking about launching digital measures. The there would be a rise in the expenditure two point nine percent, but then it would with the six point seven percent as detailed in your speech. While two point nine percent is grossly insufficient, you should seek further funding from the FS or else you will be not be able to digitalize the judiciary. So the J may respond to that, please. And then what is the well, the actual expenditure last year was below that of twenty oh nine and twenty ten. Hong Kong, the updating of Hong Kong laws and law policies are left behind. And with such a low budget, I'm afraid that it will have an adverse impact on work in the front. We should update our laws as soon as possible and constitutional affairs and legal affairs. You have to beef up manpower on those fronts. I hope that you can increase the budget. Last question, the FS has decreased the legal aid services expenditure by two point four percent and it is very worrying. The government must make sure that everyone is entitled to legal representation. This is stipulated in the law. This is to ensure that there is judicial fairness. And this also underlines or undermines the rule of law. And then the government has cut the services for CAD by two point four percent. This is grossly unacceptable. Other members would like to ask questions, Mr. Lam. You will still get four minutes. Maybe you can press a button against us the second round. It you might be possible for you to do so. SJ, on point two of Mr. Lam, well, this is a comment. We note that and then for his first question, I think it should be taken by the JA. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Lam, for your question, Mr. Lam. Is concerned about the resources committed to take forward a project related to application of technology. We have adopted flexible approach in deploying our resources. So there is no question that we would set or commit fixed sums to our certain areas. We can spend more on technological applications for the two point one billion dollars. Two hundred and forty seven million dollars would be set aside for technology work. And eighty percent has to do with the remuneration for technicians and civil service staff. And two hundred percent, some fifteen million dollars will be spent on procurement of hardware and maintenance and deducting the salary. Well, well, that the other parts would take up twenty six six percent. And for the over the past few years, there has been an increase of twenty percent. So in any case, we can flexibly deal with resources to take forward policies which have to do with IT. So has she answered all your questions? She hasn't answered my third question. While I talked about the drop off two point five percent in expenditure of CAD, I think this is undesirable. How the legal aid department is not actually under the scope of a discussion, maybe I can let you know which session we took that up, Mr. Lighto Kong. JA, oh, oh, nine about judicial review in twenty twenty one. Five over ninety five percent of the JR's are related to leave applications for we've non repayment claims and only a leave is granted to only one leave application. As what the JA said, we see that there is a bottleneck in the court and that has to do with application for leave for JR. Now, in the judgments on the website of the judiciary, I can see that the courts are still handling judicial reviews launched in twenty nineteen. Now, this year is already twenty twenty. So I have three questions. First, at the court right now, how many, well, what is a backlog of leave applications for judicial reviews? And then second, JA, can you tell us? When do you think you will be able to clear the backlog? Third, you have received new leave applications with JR. So how long will it take for you to make a decision on the new applications? Three questions there, JA, please. Or rather SJ, well, it would be the JA, which who should take the questions because there are other ones handling the JA applications. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Li. These applications related to non for J are relating to non reforming claims. This is one of the challenges we face up to now. And actually, we have deployed additional resources and streamlined processes in recent days. Well, or actually several years ago, there were some three thousand new applications. And now the figure has dropped to around two thousand and we have deployed additional dedicated manpower resources and we have streamlined a lot of processing procedures and in twenty nineteen, we handled some one thousand three hundred cases. And by the end of twenty twenty one, we will have handled close to three thousand cases. Well, at the CFI level, there is still a great backlog. We still have around seven outstanding, seven thousand outstanding cases. So we have to work even harder to and deploy more resources at the Court of Appeal and also at the CFI. We should make sure that the judges can a lot more time to handle these JR applications. Our target is that at the CFA, we can handle at least two thousand cases and at the Court of Appeal, one thousand cases every year. And then hopefully we would be able to actually surpass the number referred to us by the immigration department every year. We will continue to work hard on that front. We have to strike a balance. While the they have to be taking on these additional cases for JR leave applications on top of their existing case law. So we will expedite our work. The next one, Mr. Yunis, thank you, Chairman. I would like to follow up on on the opening remarks made by the JA. At the end of February twenty twenty two, you have you have expedited the handling of SE and NSL cases and some one hundred and ninety cases at the district court are still pending. And the JA said that you would also be opening courts on Saturdays and the evening. How is the progress? Have you already started doing that? And what is the upcoming arrangement? We've noticed that actually many lawyers and arbitrators are doing what in the evening, Emmy are of the relevant courts also operating in the evening. So you are talking about one hundred and ninety outstanding cases at the district court. How long do you think that these cases will be concluded? And have you made an assessment that if the cases take too long to process, will that be unfair to the witnesses and that the culprits are not being brought to justice on a timely way? The JA, thank you, Ms. Young, for your question, like what I said in the opening remarks. And I also made the same reply in a written reply. While these cases usually take a longer time to process because the defendants' number is quite large. Well, at the district court, we needed to handle three hundred cases and a hundred of them have been concluded. And right now, among the one hundred and ninety outstanding cases of the a majority have been listed for hearing at twenty twenty to twenty three and the remaining ten percent, these are still being handled and the preparatory work is still being undertaken, including seeking case management directions and and whether whether there would be, there is already exchange of evidence, all these processes are going on. And once they have been completed, we will list the cases for hearing as soon as possible. And the at the AGS panel, I, 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 I said, before the new court building is commissioned, we will use all possible courts, which are suited to handle such cases, to handle such cases. Next year, at the One Thai Tower, we plan to construct a mega courtroom to expedite our handling of the cases. Thank you very much.
Well, trials that have been arranged on, when do you think they could be completed or concluded? Thank you very much for the question. It's hard to come up with an accurate estimate because some cases have different levels of complexity and require different processing time. If we assume that trials have been arranged and we expect more cases to be completed in twenty twenty two to twenty three, Miss Lillian K. Thank you. That's I'd like to thank the SJ for offering a my question SJ oh, oh, four, which is about the promotion of mediation services in the Greater Bay Area. We have seen the DOJ's work in this regard. In point number four, the SJ said that for those with credentials on the mainland, no statistics are maintained. And a leaf might be offered for those who are sitting the examination. And this is an encouraging move in light of the importance of the GPA would internal indicators be imposed on the staff of the SJ that they should possess legal qualifications in both Hong Kong and the mainland since some GBA mediation services involve a number of cross boundary issues. Would more work be done to promote the mutual recognition of such qualifications under SJ oh, oh, five? The SJ indicated that some a total of two thousand six hundred and forty two new cases were handled or they were brought against the government. If you maintain a breakdown of these cases, you can analyze them in detail and ascertain whether such cases were brought due to issues related to policy in terms of staff training. If you maintain a breakdown of these cases that could benefit staff training. For instance, would many of these cases be related to JR's or town planning? Thank you very much. I would first address your third question. We have heard your view. We have heard your view. And, um, we can certainly maintain a detailed breakdown of such cases. As for the mutual, um, recognition between both places, this requires collaboration in the context of the Greater Bay Area. And this is something we mentioned in the G P A joint conference after we complete the work on mediation, we will move on to arbitration and that's on our beta. So we, that would require collaboration between authorities and the three places rather than the D O J alone. I will, um, voice out opinion on appropriate occasions and hopefully we can follow up to the joint conference. As for the number of staff possessing Chinese, um, legal qualifications, we do not maintain such statistics. As for those who engage and work in the G P A, um, such qualifications might not be necessary, but they are always helpful. So we could certainly, um, consider this proposal in advising our staff, training and recruitment exercises. Thank you very much. It's Dr. Fisola. I'd like to thank the, um, S J and J A. In recent years, the D O J and judiciary have achieved positive results. We could all see their efforts. We have seen a, um, response to some longstanding issues, such as the complaints mechanism against J J Os. We have seen some breakthroughs. But of course, um, every coin has two sides. A lot of people criticize the long trial times for, um, solicitors and nurses. Very often, they would have to, uh, wait a very long period for trials to take place. But that shows that Hong Kong is a common law jurisdiction with a focus on procedural justice. So I do understand the situation. And, um, under this context, manpower is a crucial issue. Years ago, the Chief Justice of the Court of Appeal, um, talked about having to deal with thousands of cases related to culture claims. And, um, in light of the occupation, Occupy Central movement in twenty fourteen and the anti-extradition law amendment, um, events in twenty nineteen, I'd like to know how many judges were deployed to help deal with these cases in order to, um, help alleviate the backlog, the backlog of cases. If redeployments were made, um, did you manage to attract new blood through the judiciary? And in this regard, um, have you managed to achieve any breakthrough? Many law schools in, um, Hong Kong have nurtured talents in law and many have at least ten years of experience in the legal profession. Have you tried to, um, attract such talents? I think many practitioners who are fast the experience could be interested in joining the D O J or judiciary. Given our backlog of cases and many people think that, um, the trials are taking way too long. I think, um, we lack manpower in many different areas without, um, compromising procedural justice, um, which has always been very important for us. And, um, sometimes, um, the procedures would, um, drag on before the case is taken to the judiciary. This might be inevitable. I think, um, legal aid should be granted when needed. So I'd like to know, um, what you will do or what plans you have in terms of manpower. Doctor Lang, please allow time for the J A or S J to answer the question. J A, please. Thank you very much for the question. As I said in my opening remarks, at different levels of court, we have recruited judges openly in recent years by increasing the number of judges at the C F I and Court of Appeal. We were able to deal with leave applications for J R related to non-refund claims, apart from recruiting permanent judges. We have always been, um, and we have also been engaging appropriate practitioners at, um, deputy judges, both, um, at the District Court and the, um, C F I, we have also hired judicial assistants who can render support to judges. So, um, these are some of the examples in which we are tackling the manpower shortage. Ms. Eldon Chow. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow on a question I asked J A zero zero four. My question was about the number of J R, um, leave application cases. There were more than one thousand seven hundred leave applications. One thousand six hundred and seventy-five of them were related to non-refund claims. This number, um, show that the main bottleneck faced by our courts stem from non-refund claims. I think abuse of the system of non-refund claims is nothing new at the previous term of let's go. Many members followed up on this issue. Legal aid, um, might not be within the ambit of this session. But I'd like to know, um, whether this problem can be addressed fundamentally when granting legal aid, should the government impose, um, more stringent requirements to prevent possible abuse of both, um, legal aid and the J R mechanism? This is my first question. Recently, two UK judges resigned as non-permanent judges at the C F A. It was obvious that they were subject to political pressure from the UK government. Or, um, there was a collusive element politically. And recently, a rebuttal was offered. I believe, um, you should, um, reinforce your views internationally. Many non-permanent judges have chosen to stay in Hong Kong. They have focused on their judicial duties rather than, um, metal in politics. I think, um, we should relay such messages on the international stage because some, some unscrupulous parties are trying to undermine China by making such moves. I believe you should, um, offer more rebuttals along this side. The J will answer the first question and then the S J, J A. For non-refund claims. Mister Chow, um, asked about legal aid. I do not have such information on hand. But as for the J R, um, applications relating to non-refund claims, we have been exploring how we can streamline the procedures for cases, um, that warrant paper disposal, that would be done in mid twenty twenty one for, um, cases involving redundant applications for no particular reason. Judgments have been made and such cases have been minimized since. Going forward, we will strive to minimize the workflow in order to expedite the handling of these cases. S J. I'd like to thank Mr. Chow for his views. We will continue to do what is needed. I'd like to highlight two points. First, in upholding our judicial system and judicial independence, um, the judges and legal profession all have a part to play. And these include our local, um, solicitors, bearers, as well as some those who have obtained, um, local, local qualifications. Judicial independence, um, relies on the constitutional safeguards and this is enshrined under the basic law. And in terms of judicial practice, um, they reflect, um, the level of judicial independence. Through, um, procedures and judgments, we can see how, um, courts, um, decide cases impartially and based on evidence. So we must continue to relay, um, messages on Hong Kong's judicial independence. And this is, this will continue to be a backdrop that would not be shaken, Mr. Tung Kiu. First, I'd like to, um, thank the S J. We talked about the use of technology, including remote hearings. I think, um, this has been adopted in many civil cases. I consulted some friends from the legal profession who had experience, um, using remote hearings. I'm referring to J A zero one zero. Apart from civil, um, cases for some relatively straightforward cases such as, um, traffic contraventions, could remote hearings be adopted? And in the S J's reply, it was mentioned that, um, a second round of consultation will be conducted. Would that involve those from the, um, technology sector? They can, they might be able to offer valuable comments on remote hearings.
J A, please. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chu, for your question. In respect of remote hearings from twenty twenty to now, we have held over one thousand remote hearings. And right now, these are mainly civil hearings, civil cases here. And we can work on both complicated and straightforward cases. But then, when it comes to criminal proceedings, we need to have legislative amendment. And later this year, we would consult the stakeholders on our proposal. And if the techno, um, I T sector can, uh, give views, that will be most welcome. But we are concentrating on working out the legal basis for, uh, remote hearings to criminal proceedings. We would also be trying to do the best job in providing the relevant technical support. If there is no follow-up, uh, the next one, Mr. Tong Lee Chair. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to follow up on three replies. J A O O eight and J A O O eight and O O four and O nine, brother. In O O eight, um, there has, it just mentioned the vandalism of court properties and intimidation of, uh, judges cases. There are, uh, the numbers are eighty-four and thirty-one respectively. The figures are staggering because people are ignoring the rule of law and the judicial independence. I think this has to do with the black clut rioters. So can you tell us how many cases, um, have been cracked? And, uh, what is a judgment? And how many people have been prosecuted? I think these are serious cases. These pose challenges to the rule of law. So will the government step up publicity on such cases, especially the sentencing? So that, uh, you can educate the public that, um, if you intimidate judges and judicial officers, these are serious crimes. And then J O O four and J O, J O nine, we are very concerned about the number of J R cases, especially those related to non-refund claims. They take up a very, uh, high percentage. It's close to nine, ninety, uh, percent or rather over ninety percent. So they take up a lot of our, of our judicial resources. The J A said that you have done rounds of legislative amendments, streamlined processes and so on. The number of, uh, new arrivals has dropped significantly in recent years. Would that help the judiciary in, uh, handling, uh, such cases? Will it cut down on the resources required? Are the cases really, um, in the backlog or old cases? J A, thank you, Mr. Chair, for your two questions. Um, courts are subjective vandalism, judges are intimidated. We pay a lot of attention to such cases. If there are malicious attempts to block the work of the J Os, we handle these cases seriously. For each and every of such cases, we will liaise with the police. The relevant person would, um, report to the police and then the L G A's will follow up duly. And at the court, we would review from time to time our security measures. We have beefed up our security, uh, inspections. We have engaged more security personnel. And also for postal intimidating, um, postal packages. Uh, these will be screened before they arrive at the court buildings. All these smart measures are aimed at enhancing the security of the courts. And hopefully, the such cases will decrease in number. Now, as for J R for, uh, leave applications related to non-refund claims, the number stands, still stands high. But then the number has been dropping compared to a few years ago. We have, uh, deployed more manpower, streamlined processes. So with a multi-pronged approach to tackle the problem, we hopefully, we can clear the backlog in a few years' time. Thank you, Mr. Martinel. Still, uh, you have to turn on your mic. Thank you, Chairman. I have two questions. S J zero zero eight and zero zero nine. In the joint conference of Hong Kong, Macau and Guangdong. And, um, I think they have done, uh, some important work relating to the mutual recognition of, um, mutual recognition mechanism. In the fourth, uh, well, the fourth joint conference will be held in the fourth quarter of this year. And, uh, hopefully, the relevant dispute resolution law can be passed. In the third joint conference meeting held last year, the three sides said that at the working level, they will continue with the work in formulating the relevant rules. So I would like to follow up on the progress of the, um, the work. And then for S J, make zero zero eight, from twen- well, in the twenty twenty to twenty three year, Around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars has been set aside to provide training courses to legislative trustees. Is it comparable to that of past years? And what grades of staff will be trained up? And how many people are dropped? And part of the drafting, the law drafting division and also the number of legal advice given has increased compared to that in twenty twenty one. So, well, if you just redeploy manpower, will you be able to cope with the workload? You said that you would, based on the needs, engage contract lawyers to do the work. So for the law drafting division, do you have plans to engage contract lawyers in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three? Thank you for your comment, questions. Apart from the, on the mediation work and our negotiation, I think the progress has been good. It may not be an opportune time for me to give you the details, but anyway, the progress has been very good. So in the fourth quarter, hopefully, these can be, the fourth joint conference can endorse these rules. Now, for the legal drafting work, there are two points. One is about the estimates, and then the about employee additional manpower, law draft and Mr. Le. We hope to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year, similar to that of last year. Last year, we arranged for colleagues to attend to online courses, including those on law drafting courses and statutory interpretation courses. For law drafting courses, they were arranged for those who joined the civil service for less than three years. There were two, eight of them. We spent around a hundred ten thousand dollars. And for the online statutory interpretation courses, three colleagues who are more experienced attended the course. And it, well, the cost is around three hundred English pounds, which is around a hundred, about ten thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars or so. So similar initiative will be launched this year. We hope to recruit and more people who are interested in law drafting and experienced in the work. We are actually going on, going about with our recruitment work. And we have successfully employed the right candidates to fill up posts vacated by those leaving and resigning. Let me supplement. Well, I'll have to compliment Mr. Lam in particular on the law drafting divisions and recruitment work. He had resorted to many new channels. He actually lectured in universities and asked his colleagues to publicize such posts at various occasions so that those studying for law have a better understanding of this part of work. Ms. Doreen Kwan, I also have two questions. I'm following up on Mr. Martin now's question, S J zero zero eight earlier, the S J said that, say, old laws, laws in use during the colonial era, these have to be updated and amended. And this current term, we would also do a lot more legislative work. And then for the law drafting division, the manpower has been cut. And the S J, you said that, well, based on the actual needs, more manpower will be brought in, and also contract lawyers will also be recruited. At the university, in the law program, there is no special subject on law drafting. And in the past few years, I've come to understand that law drafting is a specialized work area. Will the S J talk to the universities to organize courses on law drafting? Because since we have such an onerous workload for law drafting, and we don't have enough manpower or the right people to work on them, I'm afraid there will be delay in the work. And then answer, S J zero three three. For the Land Tribunal, well, there are many cases, well, four thousand to five thousand cases for the Land Tribunal. Only three district court judges and two Land Tribunal members are serving the Land Tribunal. I know that that would, going forward, there will be a lot of, say, tenants in disputes and rental disputes to be tackled. Do you have sufficient manpower to cope with the work compared to the Labor Tribunal? They also handle several thousand cases. They have eight assessors. And comparatively speaking, the Land Tribunal has fewer manpower or fewer people. So can I ask the S J and then J to take their questions? Thank you. I have touched upon the work of the Law Drafting Division, especially Mr. Lam. He has exploited all sorts of opportunities to introduce a workflow drafting to legal students to get them interested in the work. Well, as to whether we can organize a program, a course at university, that is a direct to further discussion with the university. We have to have someone to teach the course and so on. We are working on that all the time. Mr. Lam, any supplement? We have been actively promoting the work of law drafting at the we are also arranging forums for, for the league, for lawyers at the legal hub and so on. And then the J A, please, to take the second question, please. Thank you. Mr. Ms. Kwan, to, for your question about the Land Tribunal. The case law has been steady over the past few years. We don't see a substantial increase. But there cases which are complicated, others simple, but the overall aim is that we, well, actually, we have achieved the target waiting time at the Land Tribunal. New legislation may be enacted, and maybe that could be in more cases. As to the latest legislation on subdivided units, we haven't seen a substantial increase in the number of cases. Anyway, we can redeploy resources internally, and the judges of the Land Tribunal are actually district court judges. So we can deploy the resources flexibly, and we can also appoint deputy judges as well, and if needed, we can increase manpower.
Mrs. Smith, Chairman, I'd like to follow on my question. J A zero zero nine, many members talked about the backlog of J R applications. When we look at the recent figures. There were seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine cases in which the applications were not granted by the immigration department, and they applied for leave for J R immediately. Even if the leave is not granted by the judiciary, they would lodge appeals. If they lose the J R, they might take the case to the court of final appeal. In recent years, we have asked judiciary to deal with the issue, and you have assigned extra hours and manpower, and you managed to deal with many cases. But that means a lot of resources and manpower have been deployed, and this is certainly not ideal. Even though many cases have been dealt with. How many cases are outstanding relating to non-refund claims at the judiciary? In my question, I asked about the expenditure involved. Whether this part of the question was not answered. I asked questions on other occasions such as let's go panels. Every year, more than a billion dollars have been spent on non-refund claimants. And we have spent as much as a hundred million dollars on legal aid in recent years, and we were yet to know the exact figures spent by the judiciary. So I'd like to know how much has been spent, and how much more do we have to spend in the coming years to deal with non-refund claims? Apart from the existing measures, the other plans to tackle the problem. I think money is going down the drain every day. Only a small number, genuine applicants. In light of the abuse of the non-refund claim and J R systems, would the DOJ work with the Security Bureau on how these loopholes could be plugged? Because that is really unfair to other cases as well as Hong Kong's taxpayers. J. Thank you very much for the questions. So far, for the number of pending cases at the High Court, at the C F A, about two thousand, at the C A, about four hundred cases, C F A, some three hundred cases. We have reinforced manpower, and every year we can deal with about three thousand cases. If we further strengthen judicial manpower, we can further expedite the handling of applications. And we will also look to streamline the judicial process, for instance, by turning to remote or paper disposals. So hopefully, these would help sphere the disposals of cases. There are some seven thousand seven hundred outstanding cases. How long is needed to conclude these cases? It is difficult to come up with an estimate because we see new cases coming in consistently. If we are able to process two to three thousand cases per year, we could deal with these cases within a few years. If we engage extra judicial officers such as retired judges on a short-term basis. Well, we cannot offer a separate breakdown in this manner, Mr. Horace Chan. I'd like to ask about J A zero zero two, which was a question asked by myself. This is a question for the J. I asked about the proceedings conducted by remote hearings using video conferencing facilities. And in the reply, the J said that from February twenty twenty to February twenty twenty-two, at different levels of court, about one thousand remote hearings were conducted mostly in civil proceedings. Among these hearings, two hundred and thirty-eight used video conferencing facilities. Of these two hundred and thirty-eight cases or hearings. That's only two of these remote hearings were conducted at the district court level. Which was rather peculiar. Among the two hundred and thirty-eight hearings, only two were conducted at the district court. Was it due to limitations in facilities at district courts? And if so, are we going to see an improvement before new district court buildings are established? Can we improve the use of technology, including remote hearings at district courts in order to expedite the handling of our cases? That way, if we are hit by the pandemic again or due to other factors, our capacity will not be affected. Thank you very much for the question. Mr. Chan asked about the number of remote hearings using video conferencing facilities. There were another eight hundred cases or so. That adopted telephone technology. So the numbers were not actually very low. It's just that many of these cases did not adopt video conferencing, since the fifth wave of the pandemic started. Different levels of court have, including the district court, have made more extensive use of remote hearings. The use has been more prevalent this year. At the district court level. Very often, unrepresented litigants were involved. And that is why we have facilitated the use of remote hearings by these unrepresented litigants. And going forward, we will promote the use of remote hearings at the record level. I have no other questions. Thank you. Last two members, Ms. Eunice Young and Dr. Fisella. Miss Yassion, four minutes. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on my own question. S J zero one zero and zero 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 one one. The first is about mediation. The G B A mediation platform has been established. And that joint conference. The best practice and accreditation standards were endorsed. These are standards in place. How can we include the mediators on the list? And how many mediators apply to be listed as a mediator in the G B A? At a seminar, the S J cited issues with cross-boundary marriages. So in terms of family issues or cross-boundary issues, what has been done in terms of training practitioners on the mainland? The accreditation standards and code of conduct best practice were endorsed at the joint conference and application is needed from the mediators. The legal departments from the three places would work on the application procedures, that is the mediator qualifications. And an announcement would be made to mediators on the mainland. Discussions are underway, so we have no numbers to share at this point. As for mediation services for cross-boundary family issues. I think this would really help with family issues across the border. And at the mediation week, which will be held in May, we will have a dedicated session on this topic. So in terms of cross-boundary family issue mediation, I believe more work must be put in. I think training would would require collaboration between practitioners in the three places. This is one of our key areas of work. Thank you very much. Next, Dr. Fisella. I'd like to follow up on J A zero zero eight. I support the work of the C F A. Over the past twenty-five years, they have decided a number of key cases. Our rule of law has a very strong foundation. It is world-leading. It will certainly not be affected by the departure of any foreign judges. I think this is some part of our constitutional privileges. And the C F A has done a brilliant job. The J A told us that deputy judges have been hired to deal with the manpower shortage for the thousands of leave applications for J R related to non-refunding claims. So legislation has been amended, but I think using deputy judges is not the ultimate solution. You must have a long-term plan to tackle the judicial manpower shortage. We want to see a plan. We are going to see new types of cases in the future, such as those involving cutting-edge technology, international cases. And after we become part of the road, we might see more cross-boundary economic or financial crimes. That is why we need new blood. I think the courts are going to write direction in instituting reform. But I think we need a long-term plan. And we need to better recognize the local judges. And in dealing with many cases relating to occupied central or national security law, many judges have been intimidated and threatened. And we certainly condemn such acts of intimidation. We need to provide enough security for our judges. Some of my students became judges. This is not an easy job in Hong Kong. They have to take, take up all the tasks themselves. In some other jurisdictions, some judges have assistance. But in Hong Kong, their work is very difficult, so I think we should give them sufficient support. I think we should not just resort to deputy judges. We should recruit capable deputy judges. Thank you very much for the question. If we have openings for permanent judges in our establishment, we will certainly fill these posts through open recruitment or internal transfer. For C A judges, some, they are required to have sufficient judicial experience. Currently, at the judiciary, we have a few dozen deputy judges. Some were colleagues of judges at the lower levels of court, apart from filling the shortfall. The arrangement allows less experienced judges to enrich their knowledge. And these deputy judges might be able to fill substantive posts down the road. So every year, whenever there are vacancies, we would conduct open recruitment. And deputy judges are a way to alleviate the shortage. And we are hoping to encourage outstanding judicial talent. And indeed, judges have a heavy workload. So apart from deputy judges, we will also recruit judicial assistants who can offer help in areas like research.
Please turn on mic for Dr. Priscilla. The J A is still talking about deploying deputy judges. I emphasize one thing, attracting new blood. While those at the junior level can be trained up, and I think at the very junior level, the number of judges is grossly insufficient. Another member mentioned about offering a course on law drafting in law schools, universities. I will raise a suggestion and at the law school, I teach at the law school in City U. This is a very good suggestion. So I hope to be able to nurture talents which can help with the judiciary. So the next session will start at six oh seven P M. Please be punctual.